The time is now 6:32. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. The first item is to approve the agenda. I have an amendment to the agenda, action item six. The person that requested this item be on the agenda cannot be here tonight and ask that we postpone this discussion item for a later date, so I'd like to remove that.
A second.
Thank you. And I guess at this time, Ron?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Mm-hmm.
I motion pause the votes to close Sunderland and Courier Schools, agenda items eight B and eight C until our January meeting.
Okay. Anybody want to second that?
I will second. I will second it for the person. He's our second.
Okay. And then Rogan and Dick, any discussion on that? I'm sorry, I did not ask for discussion on the six. I didn't think there was much. But any discussion on the pause?
What is the reasoning behind the pause?
For the record, I am in favor of building a new regional middle school. I'm concerned we do not have the bond vote, and the backup plan is lacking serious details. Moving children without a buttoned-up plan and backup plan is not what is best for our children.
I'm gonna, can I say something?
Sure, yes, please.
I feel like there has been ample opportunity to bring this up at meetings, and for you to show up at this meeting and not have said anything to the whole board, I'm a little surprised. I think if we do not go through with this vote today as a board, we will lose the respect and trust of the public, the teachers, the community members. I think the teachers are very on edge about what's going to happen and where they're going to be. We have three schools that are short-staffed. We have parents who we've been getting emails for the last week and a half expressing their concern about the school's dwindling, and I'm concerned if we wait until January, then that does not give us enough time to plan with whatever forward motion we're going to be going. It doesn't give teachers enough time to figure out where they're going to be placed. It doesn't give them enough time to figure out if they want to find a new job outside of this district because jobs start getting posted in March, you know, early spring. I just, I, I...
I would also point out that we're operating under the old financial system, and the process has been refined so that it moves as quickly as possible. Some of you have not yet experienced the absolute care that the board exercises in trying to do the best financial plan to be proposed by the electorate. Sue Wilber has spent hours and hours getting ready for some of the stuff tonight, which reflects the 2026 budget, and begins to accumulate numbers that give us an idea of what the surplus might be. In December, we get a chance, early in December, to take a critical look at the superintendent's educational priorities, as reflected, because she works under the superintendent, Sue's ability to estimate everything possible that might be needed, and yet, nothing that is superfluous to the educational opportunities, something that we might wish for. Her budgets have proven over the years to be a masterwork in budgeting. If we delay this, A, we will not be able to warn the meeting, that is, our annual meeting, and we will not be able to prepare a budget and all of the information that the voters need to answer virtually any question that they might have. The process is tight. She works many hours, Sue does. So does our superintendent, and I don't know where the superintendent finds time to do everything she does. But it gets communicated, and it's been brilliant. I do not think we can postpone a discussion of the '27 budget beyond the beginning of December.
Okay. Jim?
No, just honestly, you know, looking at all the factors, you know, you brought up the bond vote. We aren't going to know anything about that for quite some time. As to the state's plans, we're not going to know about that for a very long time either. So frankly, pushing this off by, you know, to January, my estimation is a lot of the things you're concerned about not knowing are not really going to be any clearer at that point. It's going to be, you know, for the state plan, the redistricting task force is supposed to deliver these maps on December 1st. We aren't going to have a clue about that until the legislature convenes in the middle of January, and then they start getting into the huge battle about what's going to happen, and it's going to be likely a very long battle. And on the bond vote, that honestly, that's our job as a board to ensure that we can, you know, provide adequate information to our communities to gather the support for that. It's a big job, but, you know, that's on our plate, and I think we just, you know, whatever plans we decide to do, we do our absolute best at presenting the information needed to make a good decision.
Ron, do you want to say something?
Rogan.
Rogan. Sorry.
It's all right.
Three times tonight.
As far as the bond goes, it's a different economic and political time than when the board first started working on this. And property taxes and everything is a lot different. So that's my thought there. As far as waiting till the first, I don't understand why we wouldn't give ourselves 30 days to at least see what they're showing on the first. I understand everybody believes that'll last longer and longer, but to have that ability to see what they're presenting, I think voting now for Sunderland kids to move to Dorset and then to find out that they're actually going to end up in Arlington two years later is a lot for a young child.
I think, you know, if I could just respond, you know, since brought up the bond vote first, on the bond vote, the reason we are looking at this whole restructuring plan is because finances are going to be very tight in the future, and part of the plan is to ensure that we can actually operate in a way that is not going to overburden our taxpayers. And if we can't present that and show that that's the case, then maybe we may, you know, we're making a wrong decision. I feel very confident we're going to be able to get there. On the task force, the task force is, you know, they have three maps on the table right now. We know what they are. We're actually in process of trying to respond to some of those, putting a response out to them because we find them extremely lacking. You know, we know it's out there. We also were in touch enough with the legislature that we, you know, we have a, I think we can have a lot of confidence that this is, the map, they aren't just going to choose one of those maps. Those maps still have a lot of work to do, and it is November 4th, and they're due on December 1st. But we, you know, we have a real sense of what those maps, and the maps are ill-conceived in that, you know, one of the things we pointed out to the task force itself is, you know, we keep seeing maps that would break up the BRSU. We pointed out that is a rather nonsensical outcome as a pretty solidly operating school, community, you know, within the state. And, you know, and we've gotten, you know, you get individual comments. You don't get a real response. I think there's some recognition that that wasn't the real intent, but, you know, it just points out how the task, you know, these are getting presented to the task force, and the people who are presenting them don't really have a clue of the impact of those. Once the maps come down in the form that they're going to be presented in their report, I think that is, that you will see a tremendous amount of activity. I think we're trying to be ahead of the curve and trying to respond before they get to the final, those final maps, but...
Racing to the unknown.
We're, I think, you know, again, I just look at this, I think it's a very important, you know, we've been trying to for a very long time to come up with a plan that lets our kids have a future in education.
I agree, and that's why I think we need a better backup plan without the bond.
Any other points from folks who haven't spoken?
I feel like I need to just comment to the board that I think a delay is a really, really big mistake. Our community needs the board to vote. I've heard from many, many teachers, we just need to be able to move forward. Families, this has been a very, very difficult time. We are seeing and experiencing the impact of keeping these schools open. We're living it in real time. We're hearing very clear information from our families that the concerns that are brought to the board in the summer of '24 are, we're living it right now. It is not the best educational decision to continue to... I, at another point, I'm happy to discuss, I'm not, I don't really understand the discussion around the backup plan, but this plan that is on the table right now, from my perspective, can continue for quite some time. It's completely independent of anything happening at the state. And so, it is the best thing for our kids. It accomplishes everything that Act 73 is asking, and I just need you to understand that if you don't vote tonight, it puts us in a very, very challenging position to develop a budget. We're going to be essentially developing a budget for FY '27 blindly. That's not fair to our taxpayers. It's not fair to our community. Our teachers have, I spent the afternoon here today, heard from many teachers, just, let's just make this decision so we can move forward. We're ready. And people are ready. I just cannot stress that to you any more clearly. And if you delay, there's a cost to that, and it's a cost that I don't think our community deserves.
Yep. Rogan, I just wanted to, as a parent and board member in one of the communities that this is affecting, as much as I understand what you're saying, the kids, the teachers, we need a decision because we're all in limbo, and it's really hard to talk to our kids without knowing what next year is going to bring. It's hard to talk to other parents who are asking questions, and I don't think waiting 30 days, when I don't even think, whatever the maps decide, it wouldn't even take effect, I think, until 2028 or something. So whether we wait 30 days or not, you know, nothing would happen for another three years anyway with the maps. So just think of us in the community who have been in limbo. It would just be nice to have a decision.
If there's no further discussion then, all in favor of amending the agenda to delay the vote, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? We still need to approve the agenda.
I move the approval of the agenda as amended.
Removing item six.
One second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I just have it. We will now move into public comment. We have 20 minutes set aside for public comment, so I know that we have a D public here that cares very much about what we're doing tonight, but I will try to call it at 8:10, 7:10. And as requested in the past, if you would like to reiterate what someone says, just please nod to, you know, please step up, state your name, where you're from, and go ahead and say that you agree or disagree with what somebody said, but just so that we can all say what we need to say without reiterating. And again, we have a request that anybody who would like to get up for public comment, please do so at the mic, because even though I know a lot of you feel like you have loud voices, the cameras can't pick it up. So, and our office doesn't pick it up. So if it's not at the mic, it's very hard to actually record. So if anybody would like to step up to the mic, yep, we got it, please feel free to do so at this time. Okay. Okay, all right. Seeing no public comment, let's go ahead and review the board norms. You'll find that in your agenda packet. You want to read my live show? Okay. Moving on to item number five. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes from my public comment?
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Who's the second? Alex, any changes? Does anybody have any changes that I could do?
Yes, I was there.
We need to amend the agenda to say that Rogan was present at the last meeting. It says that he's absent right now.
I would accept with that change and move again the consent agenda.
Okay.
That is covered under the principle of the small arrow.
Yes, good for me, sorry.
Any other changes or discussion about the consent agenda, namely the minutes from this October 7th? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that the consent agenda passes. Six, as it was, is now gone, so we're moving on to item, actually, item six, which was previously item seven, executive limitations. Randy or Sue, would one of you like to give us a brief overview of the anticipated budget for FY '26?
I'll turn it over to you.
Okay.
So, you know what, hold on, Sue, sorry, just let me, just because this is often confusing to folks, I want to remind the board and the public that what we're doing right now is, right now, the current school year is FY '26. So at this time of the year, we look at where's the budget currently sitting. We know what the actual enrollment is because when we develop the budget in December of the prior year, we don't actually know how many kids there are. We know what positions are filled or unfilled, and we have a much better sense of where the budget stands this year. That information is really important as we begin to develop the next year's budget. So what we're looking at and talking about right now is the budget that we're currently operating within, and kind of what we're looking at as far as what was budgeted and what we're anticipating spending this fiscal year. So Sue's going to give us an update on where things stand.
Okay. So, yeah, as Randy said, this is sort of a snapshot of where we think we're going to land at the end of this year now, based on what we know now, based on the kids that are in the secondary program, the positions that have been filled, anticipated revenue, et cetera. We'll continue to tweak this as we move through budget for the next couple of drafts. So as we hire new staff, things change, we will make adjustments. There are a couple of areas that I don't think we're going to do until December, and mostly on the operational side, if you take a closer look, the operations department has on food service, things like that. We'll update those areas of the budget in December. We do anticipate ending the year with a surplus. So you guys already know that we ended last year with a higher surplus than we had originally anticipated. We have enough money to use towards the FY '26 budget. We had 999,000 we thought we would end up with. We applied all of that to FY '26 to reduce the tax rate. We ended up with a little bit more. And right now, we anticipate an additional about $143,000 available at the end of the year. So we'll continue to tweak that number, but it gives us, puts us in a good place for what we might need to use those funds for as we build the FY '27, but we'll talk about that a little bit more in December. I've given you bullet points on the reasons for why we're up or down in different areas, but the main reasons are staffing positions that aren't filled or have not been filled yet, and our secondary enrollment is down. So with secondary enrollment down, you know, we pay per student. So one kid doesn't show up and what we anticipated for account, then we're saving some money. We do right now expect that to continue as a drop in enrollment into next year, even with anticipating our, you know, 30 extra students that we throw into the budget, knowing that they come. So we're still looking at that. Obviously, that, we'll continue to watch those numbers, but right now, we expect them to be down a little.
So Randy, I remember you saying a few meetings ago that we have 53 fewer students than expected. Could that also, that, is that inflating the surplus to some degree as well? And what are some hidden impacts of, what are some impacts we won't, you know, we're not seeing on, in the budget?
You're talking about like our enrollment in the K to eight program?
Yes.
Because we're down there, right. So that's going to impact secondary if that's hitting the eighth grade.
Yeah.
Right. So on a grade-by-grade level, which I haven't analyzed whether or not eighth grade as a grade level has gone down from where seventh grade was last year, right? Like, that's really what we're looking at. But those eighth graders are going into ninth grade. So if that enrollment's down, then that decreases the budget into what we produce for secondary. Our pre-K enrollment is down. So even those numbers are less than what we anticipated for this year. So we pay for private providers, and our three and four-year-olds are 10 hours a week, 20 hours a week, to go to our private providers, and those numbers are down. So that could mean kindergarten is going to be down this year. Whether or not enrollment at the K to eight level is down next year, that enrollment in and of itself isn't something that's going to necessarily affect the budget unless it's such that it requires us to reduce class size. I think that the... I think that the conversation about next year's budget is bigger than that right now.
Mm-hmm.
Right? There's too many moving parts to really know if that's going to have an impact. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. I also was curious, like, wouldn't, if we had those 50 other students as budgeted, would that, you know, have an impact on our spending? Would that, you know, would that have pushed up our expenditures in other areas or not?
I don't know that 50 is a big enough number.
It's 5% of our enrollment, right?
Yeah, yeah. But I don't.
We had built the budget including those students.
Yeah.
I know, but are we spending less money?
Will we be spending less because those 50 students aren't here now?
Because those kids aren't?
Yeah. And you're talking about things like supplies or field trips or things like that, right?
Pretty marginal.
I think in general, those allocations that go out to the schools for spending of those funds, yeah, they may spend less, but we don't reduce those allocations because we have to. You know, we still have the same number of teachers, and so they may need to buy a little less in supplies, but then they may decide to do something different with those funds because they were budgeted.
All right. We also have fewer special ed revenues. You know, some of those kids were getting special ed services.
Yeah, but I don't think our special account is down.
Okay.
Yeah. I actually think it's up. Yeah. And special is very dependent on, to the types of services that kids are getting, right? So even if we lost a count of three and one student will get with higher level services, that would balance it right there.
Yeah, thank you, Sue.
With respect to staff positions, teacher positions, paraprofessional positions, and even administrative positions, we've made, I assume, and Randy can probably answer this better than you, every effort to fill those positions and have not been able to fill them because there's a shortage of candidates or the candidates are not qualified enough for us to employ them. Otherwise, I suspect that we would have filled them, and therefore, our surplus would be less. Is that correct?
I would say so. We have, our surplus, yes, our surplus would be less if we were able to hire all the open positions from the beginning of the year. Absolutely, without a doubt. I don't think that, we are short-staffed mainly in support staff. In the teaching positions that we weren't able to fill, we made a decision early on that we weren't going to fill those two positions. And I think that the plan that's worked on to fill those gaps is in place. So it's really the support staff and operations where we're still going to fill the rest of the positions. But, you know, we just hired through people. So it's a constant movement of people who say, oh, I'm going to leave to go do something else, and then more new people coming in.
I think that are, can I just jump in for a second?
Yeah.
I think that something that I'm just going to mention now, and I don't, we'll talk a lot more about this at the next meeting when we're looking at FY '27. Part of the challenge we've had this year in some of the, I guess in response to Dick's comment, is there's been such uncertainty with grant funds for this year from federal grant funds, Title I, Title II. So those additional funds that we have to support at-risk learners, students who are experiencing poverty, we have not been able to count on those funds. And there's even greater concern about what will, what funds we'll be able to have access to in next fiscal year. So by, so really, for the first time ever, as we look at the surplus and we're building for next year, there'll be all, a number of considerations that we collectively need to make. I'll make recommendations, but we'll really talk to you about why I'm making the recommendations, I am, to determine, you know, if we don't receive grant funds, what is it that we want to include in the local budget? And what might we want to fund using some surplus from this year to kind of keep the impact away from kids as much as possible? You know, just, it really is circumstantial that the idea of the conversation around closing schools provides a level of support and sort of protection for our kids because we have a greater density in a space. So we ultimately can do better even if we, even if we're faced with some decrease in federal funds. But I, you know, the success position, we had not found a viable candidate prior to the start of the year, given the changes at the middle school level and the concern around funding being available. We said, let's not fill that right now. Let's give the middle school a chance to get going and for the teachers and administrator to let us know what that support and services will be best for the kids moving forward, and then we'll look at it. But some of those decisions are intended to be sort of forward-thinking and intentional where, because of the concern around potentially not having some of the funds that we've had.
Jim?
No, I was just curious on the, you know, we, somewhat unusual situation of having fewer than budgeted in secondary, but, you know, I just wanted to use that we're seven below. We had built in 15, we had built in 30.
Up to years ago, 30.
Oh, that's right. So we actually had a 23 increase beyond known, but we're still seven short of where we budgeted. Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I think I'm just forgetting something. Packet page eight, line item six, reorganization planning. I'm sorry if I, is that explained somewhere?
Well, just line 289, it's another.
Line 289.
Yeah, go to packet page 16, John.
Yeah, yeah. So, oh, okay, all right. I didn't see that before the meeting. He's shed a little.
That represents.
We already discussed this in the earlier meeting about going over budget with the reorganization planning.
Randy, did you probably share your superintended comments, the contracts for the design plans that we've done? That we entered, right?
We've, I don't share the specific contracts, but yeah, we've talked about it. And we knew we weren't going over the budget in its entirety. So some of the things have been around, some of those additional studies that we've done to make, to explore, the traffic studies, the wetlands, things. Like, there's been a number of things that we are doing as part of the project, but because we weren't going over the entire budget, it didn't come to you for deficit spending.
Sorry, you're saying it didn't go over the entire budget?
Is it the budget as a whole?
The budget as a whole, yeah.
The budget as a whole.
But then not, okay, but we did go over the line item.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So we're still expecting a surplus for the year?
Right.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ben.
I'm just curious about, because that reorganization budget in particular is over-budget at this point, and we've talked a good bit about if we do vote to close Sunderland and Courier, investing in planning and work over the remainder of this year to support students and families in making that transition, whether we have funds specifically allocated for that or if we need to be thinking about moving funds to be able to support that work.
Yeah, I'm not concerned that we, I, we've definitely got the resources to support that work. So I, again, we don't, when we, throughout the budget in its entirety, when we go over on line items, we don't come to you with every one of those, right? So we're planning for it, we know we've got the money to support that work. You know, people are already talking and working on it. So yes, that is for sure a priority, and I'm not concerned about not having the money to support it.
It just feels good to be able to say that explicitly to the public?
Yes.
Even though we don't, we didn't budget for that in particular, that we are planning to expend
Yes.
resources, and we have the resources within our budget to do that effectively?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
And we will be, as we look ahead, you'll hear when we're budgeting for FY '27, how we're supporting the transition for next year and considering costs associated with that in next year. So it will be talked about really explicitly for the, you know, for next school year as well.
Any more questions from Sue or Randy on the budget? Sue and Randy, thank you for getting this all set.
It's, this is Sue's work.
This is kind of work, Sue. Thank you. Survey results, item 6B for monitoring the policy 2.3. I think that is in our packet, so we can look through. Nothing is jumping out at me if anybody would like to have a discussion around it. Other than that, I will point out, seven board members and one student rep completed the survey. We can do better. We should try to make sure that we prioritize that when we have time during the month. I know that sometimes these come out quick. But it'd be great if we could get further compliance, and I'll be perfectly honest, I might have been one of the ones that didn't do it. So I apologize to the entire board.
Is it possible to get, I didn't do it either. Is it possible to get a weekly reminder?
I feel like we get like three reminders.
I know, I know. She does a really good job. I'm sorry.
How about, what if we put, can we put it like a calendar reminder? And so it just shows up on a calendar that it's due on a certain day?
Yeah, does it happen the same day every month?
No.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Something like that?
She does.
Where we knew like the Saturday, Tuesday, we're seeing it?
She does. She has them all scheduled to go out, the first one and the second one. So it's on a schedule. I'm sure that I can tell her to add more.
I will.
How many more reminders do you want?
No, no, no. Well, I can also, I'll shoot out reminders also.
And like earlier in the day, maybe.
The last reminder does tell you the date you have to have it in by, for sure.
Like, early in the day.
All right. Well, let's move on to the distribution of the monthly update from superintendent. Randy, you, this is lovely and long. Is there anything you want to highlight in here?
It's lovely and long, and the assistant superintendent wrote it this month for the first time. So I am, I'm sharing that with you, that this is Skylar's first superintendent report. And I said, hey, given everything that's going on, let's really, let's give a shout out to teaching and learning and the work happening in our schools. And so that's, it's got the bombard flare to it. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We did just finish this multilingual learner audit, which was a very interesting process for me. And they were incredibly impressed by our program. And for me, that's really a highlight when we think about the significant increase of multilingual learners within our system and the programming we're providing and really taking a strengths-based approach to, you know, really, it's pretty impressive when you think about children learning English and being bilingual in our schools, and we're doing a good job. So it was a nice process. There's this action-based learning, it's talking about Medawee. It's pretty cool what they're doing over there. And we've got some of our teachers in TNG who are also going to begin to use it. It's very, and this, John, this is very indirect, but it really made me think about some of the conversations that you've raised with us recently around, like, boys and learning and public education, school, education in general. Watching kids, having, we have PE teachers, working with the primary teachers, lesson planning and having action-based learning lessons. So they get together and they take modules from into reading or into, I mean, or reveal math, and they're in practicing with movement, exercise, and repetition. And it's pretty amazing to see kids that don't necessarily shine in a typical setting, just really flourishing. So we're excited to see that starting to get a little bit of traction in TNG, too. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have about what's in here, but.
Is this sent out to families as well? I should know because I'm a family.
I don't, I don't send the superintendent reports out to families.
I don't know. I don't know. Ask the families, but, you know, it's some good stuff in it, so I don't know if it's.
Thank you.
Ben?
Randy, one thing that I was thinking as I was reading this was, one, there's a lot of great stuff in here. But two, I find myself looking for some critique of our system in your reports, especially as we are, you know, we're in the middle of this, you know, this moment where we're talking about closing schools because of the challenges that these schools are facing and the impact on students and whatnot. And I don't really see that in the superintendent reports at all. And part of what, the reason for wanting that is to see how we're addressing it in the immediacy. And obviously, as a board, we have a responsibility to, on the big picture, to make some decisions on that level. But in the up-close level, like what's being done, you know, to address the issues that are showing up in schools. And, you know, and I'm harkening back to the last community meeting we had, and there was a lot of conversation around food and school meals and what's going on with that. And so I found myself wanting some of that response to some of that. And I know that's not necessarily what the superintendent report is, a response to public comment from the last meetings necessarily. But I do think it would be helpful in future superintendent reports to have, at least this is just me as an individual, I don't know if, can't not speak for the full board, but to hear about some things that you're recognizing that we're not doing as well as we could be and how you're planning to address it or are addressing it. And I just, I think that would help, you know, increase our understanding of and confidence in the way that we're addressing things that are not going well.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ben.
I would say, I would second that idea. Yes.
Got a four from Jessica on line. Any further discussion on the superintendent report? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item previously eight, now item number seven, government process. And our first item up for discussion is, just a discussion item for school closures before we get to the voting. I think we've kind of left this open so that we can have a full discussion as a board on the actions we're going to take kind of as a whole, without having to look at them individually. And then we can look at them individually when we come time to vote. I know, Randy, you put out some information to us about some of the ideas and thoughts around closing one and not the other versus the whole system. So if anybody is, wants to open up that discussion or any other part of that discussion, I'm happy. Yeah, Emma?
So I didn't go to Sunderland, but I know a lot of people who did. And I didn't have a very strong opinion over whether or not Sunderland closes. And I felt like I didn't get to have an opinion because I didn't go there, I guess. But I was talking to a lot of my friends, and they all love Sunderland so much, but they all recognize that, like, while it's so sad and they're upset that their school is closing and maybe their parents went there and their grandparents went there, it's a necessary change that has to happen because as it is, Sunderland can't function to its best ability with the students enrolled there and the resources and the district being stretched too thin with Sunderland still there. And so I just want to share that, like, I've been having conversations at EBA with students who went to Sunderland. And while they're sad that their school is closing that they went to, they also recognize that it's a necessary change that has to happen.
Thank you, Emma. Yeah.
I'm just kind of curious if anyone on the board is still on the fence and has any questions that they want to explore together as a board that we can hash out.
Wow, this is the quietest we've been in a really long time.
I wanted to add to that a little bit by suggesting that I listened very carefully to all of the meetings that I went to. And because I had moved specifically to a small community outside of Hartford, specifically so that my three-year-old and six-month-old could walk to school, the little elementary school. But it turned out that the Board of Education, in an effort to balance the budget, make sure that the schools were answering the fiduciary responsibilities. make sure that the schools were answering the fiduciary responsibilities, that is their job, fill the classrooms and make things work as efficiently as possible. I attended several meetings. There were four elementary schools in my town. And of the four, they picked the smallest one, the fewest number of students, to close in part because those kids would travel or almost could walk to the school in the middle of the town. And I have to say, I participated complaining that I'd moved to the town so that my children, two boys at this particular point, could walk to school. I was somewhat being selfish in the sense that the school that was supposedly closing, they couldn't walk to school. And so periodically, the pressure in the entire town actually recommended each school, one after the other, be closed, which set up a decisive debate in town. And a debate really focused around what's the best educational outcome for these kids. But because my town happened to be growing in its racial diversity, the biggest complaint made was to make sure that the other three elementary schools were equally racially diverse. Ultimately, they decided to close the original school. Actually, closing that school, despite the complaints that the community would collapse, worked out. But the Board of Education, in its wisdom, announced redistricting is impossible. No one will serve on the committee. I walked down to the front and volunteered to serve on the redistricting committee. In our town of twenty-two thousand people, I made sure, along with the really extraordinary committee, three of whom ultimately were elected to the town council, one of them as the chair of the town council. Extraordinarily capable people. We collectively went around and made sure that we knew the racial properties of every single household for every child currently in the school and every child that might be born within the next six months. Plotted that on a graph and drew our lines so that the schools were totally racially integrated. It was supposed to last five years, given the demographic studies. It has now lasted forty years. I got involved in school politics at that particular point. I hear, I understand, and as a little boy experienced kindergarten in one school where I was bust, first grade where I walked a mile and a half, because that was the rule, because I'm old enough that people felt that they could walk anytime they needed to. And a mile and a half was within two-mile distance. Finally, I was shifted to a different school in second grade. And they built a local school almost across the street that opened when I was in the third grade. I don't think I suffered because I had the support of my parents. They were vitally involved throughout. I understand that schools are local communities and that schools and things happen. But my first childhood community was around the swimming pool, the town swimming pool. And the same for my own children. I got to meet parents, and then we all got older, kids moved to different place. We established new communities. I invited different sets of students in each of the grades, kindergarten, first grade, second grade and third grade, to my birthday party. They were different. As a result, I hear the vital interest in preserving communities. But I believe communities can change. I listened to everybody. I think it's important that I did. Thank you.
I'm going to follow up on John's statement. You asked, you know, if anybody was undecided or if they had any follow-up questions. I think it's important to acknowledge that we got a slew of emails over the past week and a half. And we haven't necessarily talked about them as a board, if that's something we want to acknowledge now. We've had a lot of discussions, we've heard a lot of public comment, I see a lot of familiar faces out today. And, I mean, I personally, I would say, I, I think we all can say that we appreciate that you have all come along on this journey with us. It's not been easy for us, it's not been easy for you. And just an acknowledgement of the communications that have been sent, one, thank you. But we should, we should probably discuss it, and we should, as much as, this is a sticky wicket, we also just had a non-binding referendum vote. And I think it's really important that we acknowledge that as a board. Whether, and, and how we are feeling about that and how that is going to, well, how that's going to play out when we are called to vote in a few minutes. Ben?
Thank you. I, I just, I think, I'm not on the fence, per se, but I do think that there's, that we have, there are a lot of questions that were asked of us in the public forums and over the course of the last number of months. And we have not yet delivered on some of the information that has been asked of us, like bus routes and what are the extracurriculars that are going to be offered? And what are the extra services that are going to be available? And what are the plans for integrating students into different schools? And some of that I know is in the works, but I think we owe it to these communities to really provide some details. And I think we can make our own judgment, we have to make our own judgment on this vote as a board, based on our knowledge of what, you know, the, our experience has been with the administration, the superintendent, the business office over the past number of years, that they will follow through with the things that they have said they'll follow through on. But I think not having that, those, that information out there has hurt our, the public's understanding and confidence in, in our, in our vote. So I, I just think that I, I would really like to, like, to see some of that information. It would have helped me in my process, even, I have confidence that we'll, we have said as a board, we clearly want under an hour bus routes. We, and, and that has been delivered in the past, and I think it'll be delivered in the future. But it would sure be nice to have it shown to me in, in the interim. And I think the public is looking for those sorts of things too. So I think, while we, I'm not suggesting that we delay the vote here in this, for that information, and I'm, and I'll make my decision based on the information we have. But I think that I would really love to see over the next period, in the next period of time, some really good communications with details on, on what's happening. And to get, you know, whatever, I mean, it, I guess I shouldn't, I feel like the vote is going forward, that we're likely going to close these schools, based on all the information that we've collected over the past number of years. And I think we need to, if that's the decision we make, then we need to really clearly start communicating what all these benefits are that we say we're going to have, really, really clearly. And, and get people excited about it and have good reason for it. And, and put, you know, put our money where our mouths are in terms of the budget for next year, especially understanding that obviously we're all going to pay for that budget, and it's got to be, people need to support that. But, anyway.
Thank you, Ben.
I want to piggyback off of Ben. I, I think it's really important to get the bus routes out sooner than later. We've had parents ask, we've been talking about how the buildings are struggling. And so whatever is decided, even, you know, if we do move forward with a bond for a middle school, we're still going to have kids in whatever building they're in. We need to make it clear, like, what are we investing into that building to make it safe for families? I do want to recognize the, the vote here that happened on October, in October twenty-eighth. I'm sad about the percentage of voters that came out to vote, I wish it was higher. And, you know, we had some feedback after the vote with emails about, you know, did families really think about, like, what's going to happen at the state level and high schools and whatnot? Nobody wants to close a school. And I just, I just, you know, I wish we had more information, but I know we're not going to get it.
Can I specifically address what you asked? The emails, I read them all, there was a bunch of them, and they were all pro-closing the schools. I have to assume that these people are in the yes column of the vote. And the data is there, the votes, they didn't, they didn't make it. So, I don't know where the no, keep our school emails were, but, you know, it, it, I think to your point, it puts us in a tricky spot where the emails are saying one thing and the vote is clearly saying the opposite. That's all I've got there.
To answer that, we did receive a lot of votes in, letters, letters early on, earlier on. It's only as we get closer to the vote that we've gotten, we've heard from the people who were, who were more silent. I'm concerned also that only nineteen or eighteen percent of the population voted. When, when we first set the date, I was like, why didn't we set it for November fourth? And they said, well, it's because Vermont isn't officially voting, so there's no reason. So, the only incentive for people going to vote was this one issue. And certainly the people who feel strongly about closing and not closing the school are the ones who obviously, I mean, it's hard to know what the town really feels when you only hear from twenty percent, right? So, I, I'm not saying discounted, I'm just saying it's just really difficult.
Absolutely. There was a woman at the Sunderland meeting who brought up the point that she felt town, she felt that the town thought that the board had already decided and the ship had sailed, basically.
I heard that at Courier too. I would offer also, as far as that vote goes, we know there are very few families left in our schools. So if you look at the population of the towns, families in the schools versus town members, you're also going to see a huge discrepancy. So, I can't say for certain, but I, I consider that that possibly is part of the situation. We have, you know, the families in the schools have a very different opinion of what's happening, and the nostalgia for the schools is not the same as folks who have gone there and had their children gone there, but are now adults, and are kind of void of what, what the population is. And just kind of anecdotally, I was kind of fascinated just in the history of these schools. And I did look up, yeah, when Courier was open, it was, there was two hundred students there when they first opened. And that was a booming marble business in Courier, and that's not there anymore. So, I, I can't see Danby growing exponentially in the near term. And I can say the same thing about Sunderland when I look at, I hated this argument, but I, again, kind of dove a little bit deeper into it. There are a lot of Airbnbs in Sunderland, so many in fact, that most people are living within three walkable Airbnbs within a mile of their house. Those houses will not be housing new families coming in with new kids. So I don't see the population change anytime soon in Sunderland as well. So, you know, when I look at what we, when we built these schools and they were thriving communities in these spaces, those communities are not here anymore. And when those thriving communities existed, the people that were there, that are still living in these towns, have very fond memories of them. And rightfully so, I have fond memories of my students being there, but that is not the reality of today. And I, I, like I said, I don't see it going back, unfortunately. And so that leaves the fond memories being weighted against the outcomes of our kids. And that's why it's, I have an easier time, not easy, but it seems more clear what we should and could be doing for our kids. I saw Lindsey's him first, and John, I'll give you.
I just want to piggyback off Mel a little bit, because my struggle has been hearing the community and them thinking of Courier as the community space. But then I look at it that it should not be on the backs of our kids to provide the community feel at their detriment. And that's where I struggle. And I'm hoping however the vote comes out, that maybe if a school is closed, the town would step up to provide the community experience. But I just don't think the kids should suffer so that the communities can have that cohesiveness, so to speak.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, it, it's a non-binding referendum for good reason. Because, you know, we're one district, and we have other people and other kids in the district, other taxpayers, and, and they have opinions too. With that said, you know, I plan to vote yes on both, and it's, I feel like a villain doing that. It's, you know, these are schools both of long histories, so we're talking about a death of, of schools. And the question I have is how do you, how do you mourn a death of a school, right? How do we do that, how do we do that appropriately as a board? You know, I'm not going to vote yes because it's popular or because I'm trying to predict what the state is going to do. I'm going to vote yes because as a school district, I don't believe we can fulfill our potential if we keep those schools open. And that's sad to say, and probably not making me a lot of friends. But that's what I believe. But I also want to, you know, recognize that this is, and we all recognize it, if we vote yes, is the death of schools with a long history and tradition. And how do we recognize that, I don't know how to do that. So how do we recognize that? And how do we respect that tradition and beyond the closure of those schools?
When I think about it, like, the community and everything like that as well, like, so I live in Danby, and we do do a lot of community things too, but within the school, like, the kids have their own community, like seeing my little brother and like, all of that, like, he loves his gym teacher so much. But his gym teacher's only there, like, one or two days a week, because he's jumping through schools and stuff. So like, coming together, like, he would be able to see his gym teacher more, have like a stable teacher who's there more. And if you ask, like, any little kid what their favorite subject is, they're going to be like recess. Like, so, and like, the, the like electives are just so important to them. And like, my campers, like, every little kid I ask, like, they're like, I like art, I like recess, I like music. And for like, these small schools are all kind of sharing a teacher, even when I went there, they were sharing a teacher. And it's just like, maybe you're having a rough day as a little kid, and your gym teacher's the person you go to. But your gym teacher's not there that day. And it's just like, that was something I was thinking about, like, yes, there's school counselors and stuff, but sometimes it's just a specific teacher you want to go to. And I feel like it'll form like, our community things in Danby are like once a month, but think about when your kid is at school every single day. Like, they go, that's their community every single day. And like, coming together is forming like a better one for like, more teacher stability, like, in that sense with like his gym teachers and stuff. And then, when I've been thinking about the school situation, I think a lot about, what, like, last year when I was on the school board? I think it was, was her name Deb, maybe, she said something about?
Deb Lias.
Yeah, she said something about, like, schools will always close, like, she worked with- Like, she worked with, like, like, when she was, like, a long time ago, the schools were closing up on the mountain. And like, they did, and it happened, and we moved on from there, and now it's happening again. Like, things will always happen. So that's kind of just how I've been thinking about it.
Thank you. Alex?
So I've only been on the board for a little over five years. I don't have quite as much history as Dick. You know, I was on the middle school committee when this first came up that we were going to have to consolidate schools, and I was dead set against closing Courier. My children both go there, they love Courier, they do a wonderful job there with not a As I've learned more, gained a much broader perspective, and my, and my perspective has You know, I hate the idea of closing a school, but I see the opportunities that a larger merged school will provide all of our children. Also, you know, while we have no idea what the state's going to do, and we can't guarantee that closing these schools is going to protect us from getting split apart, not closing the schools is almost certainly going to let them just terrorist shreds. So I'm going to vote to close both schools.
Thank you, Alex.
Before I ran to be in this spot, I remember back in August last year, when the first reconfiguration meeting in Sunderland, they showed up all fired up. And I couldn't imagine sitting here today, having to make this decision. I was running around Dorset, getting people fired up about Dorset changing, and really upset about it. And obviously, I was upset in May when we were talking about changing the schools. But when I ran for this spot, I had already said that we need to do what's best for the students and our children, and we can't have three schools that are on skeleton staff. They are struggling. We need to bring them together. And so unfortunately, I will vote to close both schools. I think by bringing everybody together, we can do a lot of good, and our students can thrive. And I don't know if we leave one or both of them open, if that's going to be the case. I think families are going to ask to school choice, or, I'm sorry, not school choice, inter-district choice, if you leave that school open. I've heard from both Sunderland and Danby Courier families who will want a school choice out if those schools are left open.
David?
At the risk of, of repeating, I'll try to come at it different, in a slightly different way, and that is, I think it's an honor to be living in an area where education is valued as highly as it is. We have always, when we get, when, in our area, when we try to, when we try to pass a budget, it's usually seventy-five, eighty percent. People really support our schools, and, and we don't have to worry about that. So, so as a school board member, I've looked at that and said, okay, so what is my job in this world? My job is to continue to try to find the best educational opportunities possible for all of our kids at a reasonable cost. Okay, that's fine. And so we're trying to do our job, and that's why status quo is, is not, we can't continue the status quo because of the cost. But then, especially at the Danby meeting, there were so many poignant moments where people talked about the power of the community. And, and at first, I was a little shaken by it because it was really powerful, it was really good points that people were making, and, and they felt it strongly. But then I thought about it, because that's the way I, I work, and I started thinking, well, these people care about their community, and they care about their kids, so they're going to follow their kids. So their job is to play that role for their kids as much as they can, wherever they're moved to. Our job is to provide the best educational opportunities possible at a reasonable cost. And so if all of us do our jobs, then it's fairly clear in my mind that we close the schools, but we find a way to support parents in rebuilding and rebranding and re-energizing our school communities.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? I'd like to, I'm going to say this now in case we want to discuss it, but for future agenda items, I wonder if, to Ben's point, if we can, you know, from here on out, have updates to the consolidation process so that as information is ready at the technical agreement, to be issued with transportation, scheduling, all of those, so that, you know, we can, when we're asked these questions again by the public, you know, what the progress is, we can make sure that we're up to date. Not that you wouldn't already, but just to say, you know, I think we, I think you're absolutely right. We should, this shouldn't be the end of this conversation. You should follow through on, on what we're proposing and asking.
Just to piggyback off that, if there is a decision tonight to close a school, I don't think, I would want to wait to hear what the plan is to start integrating the kids together, like, you know, get them started. I don't want to wait until December meeting or January's meeting to hear something. I would like if there is something decided today that, you know, rather soon, what the works are to help for the kids, if I'm coming across right. And apparently, actually, it's not a really good idea to do, like, the pen pals between the schools. That would be great. I'm sorry, I just, that would be a great idea.
No, I will follow, you know, and I, just to make sure, what I'm asking, what I'm suggesting is, is not, you know, I want to make sure we're in the realm of policy governance, it's not so that we're voting necessarily on how she moves forward, just that we're updated so that we can be as well versed as possible when folks are coming to us, and making sure that we're following through one over. But I love that we're thinking about ideas.
Can I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can I ask a clarifying question, though, on this, on our consideration?
On the vote?
On the package? When it says, though, the budget reduction to operational costs and staffing decreases, is that?
Kelsey, where are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on pitch training. Sorry. The staffing decreases, we've been talking about how nobody, is this, like, through natural?
Yeah, so, so what we've talked about is that there will be staffing reductions, but we don't expect that to be personnel that are currently employed. When we look at the, when we look at the overall attrition rate of our schools, the number of positions that would be reduced in the system is far lower than the number of people who will leave on an annual basis, like, typically. Yep.
Ben?
On a related note, there's, and this is thoroughly in the public rumor mill, but there is public rumor mill that all the teachers' names are going to get basically put in a hat and randomly redistributed, which I don't think is probably the way that's going to work. But it just, bringing that out as a point to say, you know, the, the need for communication about how, how these decisions are, are being made to communicate that as appropriate, and we need to get some more information out on, on some of the, some of these topics. So, again, like, that's not our role as a board to oversee that process, but when I'm starting, when I hear things like that in the public, all I can say is, like, I'm pretty darn sure that's not the way that's going to happen, but I can't tell you how that process works.
Yeah, and that was all, the entire process was very clearly communicated with all employees in the system, including the timeline and the process. So every employee knows the process and the timeline and how it's going to be. I, yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just keep it that, that simple. They've known, people ask questions all the time, I've been working with the union, I communicated that to you. There's lots of rumors, so many rumors.
But we can say that's not true, their names are not getting thrown in a hat, right?
We, yeah, we, we're not using a hat. Yeah.
Bucket.
John?
Not a bucket either.
Actually, I'll ask after the vote, nevermind.
Any further discussion before we move on to the vote?
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I have a question.
Oh, yeah, Jessica, you, you moved from my, where the, you were. Jessica, please, go ahead.
I just, I think what, I think what I'm hearing, and really just, correct me if I heard that wrong, but is, I guess that the employees are aware, but are you going to be, is that an agreement that we can maybe build in, like, a formal part of our ongoing meetings to hear about those changes, that inform the public about them as well?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't typically explain the process at a meeting or share it with the public, what we're talking about right now. But what I am hearing is, what I am hearing, thanks, Cliff, that what I'm hearing is that, that the board wants information on the consolidation moving forward, and that's, I think, completely reasonable. Yeah, I mean, I, I, there's no reason not to, it's just not something typically I would do.
Can I back that up a second?
I agree that I think these, these certain differences are different than normal operating for those businesses, and I really appreciate it as a board member to have that information.
I thought we already got this information, I'm sorry. I, like, I'm sorry, I thought we already got this information. Am I the only one? Like, I feel like for the teachers and how they're reentering and whatnot, like...
I'm more telling you what's coming, like, as we move through this, like, throughout the, all the...
Oh, yeah, that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes, that's, that's fine, that's understood and heard. I was thinking I did, but you're always thinking like I didn't. I did, okay, so I, all right, that makes me feel a little better, thank you.
There's some seniority discussions.
They're seniority and they get all the preferences, and they have a timeline before holidays, like...
Yes, thank you, okay, that makes me feel better. I was like, wow, I, I, okay, thank you, Kelsey, yes.
Yeah, and it's, we, yeah, and I, you know, I think it is really tricky because we're going through a transition, we're also a policy governance board, right? So there are a lot of things, staffing agreements, that we don't get involved in, we're not, we should not, and we're not allowed to, they're not, you know, in our purview. And not just not in our purview, you're talking about staffing agreements that are private.
That's right. I mean, the whole process has been built on with the union and coordination with everybody and, and alignment with the agreement. Yeah, I've been pretty public about it.
Can I, one other thing, can I just add? Can you, I feel like it's been very clear for teachers, but can, maybe it's not as clear for admin staff, because some are on the, on a union and some are not, and...
Do you mean, like, the support staff?
Yeah.
Same?
Well, we'll talk later.
Okay, support staff have the same?
I don't think it supports.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead, yeah, I'm looking for a motion for item D.
I'm, the question being posed in the motion is, shall the board close the Courier Memorial School effective June 30th, 2026, with a vote being either close or don't close being appropriate?
I, I'm going to clarify, and I'm going to still, let's still go by yays and nays. And yays will signify that you are in favor of closing, in favor of your motion, and nays will signify that you are not in favor of closing. Because this vote requires a seventy-five percent passage rate by our board, we are going to do a roll call vote because anything, as we'll point out, anything that's not fully unanimous should be done by roll call. And to make it easy and stress-free, so you know when you're going to vote, you've been assigned an order based on alphabetical last names. Keep it simple.
If you need a second, I'll give you a second.
That'd be great. Thank you, David, sorry. I jumped ahead a little bit.
That's fine.
So Jessica, you are up first, yea or nay, on the, on the closure of Courier Memorial School?
I'm in, yay.
David Chandler?
Yay.
Dick Dale?
Yay.
Ron Flynn?
Nay.
Ben Freeman?
Yay.
Rogan?
Nay.
Kelsey?
Oh, yay, sorry.
Right, Lindsey?
Yay.
Jim Salzder?
Yay.
Melanie Vergilio, and I will say yay. Alex Wild?
Yay.
Jeff Wilson?
Yay.
And John Wilson?
Yay.
Okay, so a seventy-five percent vote would have meant that we needed ten out of the thirteen votes. We, in fact, received...
Eleven.
Eleven out of the thirteen, thank you. You want to, I'll have you read the next one for us, clerk. See you back. A motion?
I move the action...
That motion is carried.
That motion is carried.
It is carried.
That motion is carried.
The action item is, shall the board close the Sunderland Elementary School effective June 30th, using the same technique?
Dick, I need a second?
Second.
David? Jessica?
That vote, yay?
Yes.
Yay.
Ron?
Nay.
Ben Freeman?
Yay.
Rogan?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Uh, Kelsey?
Yea.
Lindsey?
Yay.
Jim?
Yay.
Melanie Vergilio, yay. Alex Wild?
Yay.
Jeff Wilson?
Yay.
John Wilson?
Yay.
Clerk, you want to read us?
Eleven yes and two no.
Thank you. So that motion will also carry. I'm just going to pause for a quick minute.
And maybe just, just clearly communicate what just happened. I think it's important.
Yeah, so, in both instances, the board has voted eleven to two. We will be closing Memorial, Courier, Courier Memorial School and Sunderland Elementary School effective June 30th, 2026. I know none of, none of us here are doing this with a light heart, and to the public, we really appreciate your input. And no, this is hard. I don't, I don't know how best to appropriately apologize or say that we're excited, it's, all of it is, there's just a lot of emotions around this. And I think the yays represent those of us on the board that think that this will really be providing the best next steps for our kids in our communities. And if it wasn't for the kids, one, we wouldn't be here. So, you know, just giving the moment reverence, thank you for being here for this process.
Okay. Can I say, ask something now? I, I wonder, and again, this is a weird place for policy governance. Policy governance is inherently impersonal. But this is a very, you know, it feels like we need to be kind of personal, given this, and I wonder if, if it's appropriate, if some board members, all board members, were to meet with staff of Courier or Southern Elementary, for us to hear from them, how can we best support the closure of these schools? And ways to acknowledge their history, you know, to memorialize these schools, you know, with the community, to give communities an opportunity to, I don't know, I, I, I don't, I don't think I'm going over the top by saying some kind of, like, you know, funeral for these schools, right? Where people can share their memories and utilize them in a way. And maybe it's not the time for us to brainstorm these things now, and maybe the schools, the staff won't really want to hear from us or communicate with us, but I, I, I don't know, I feel like there's, I don't want to also wash, wash our hands and walk away and not be part of remembering these schools.
Yeah. Mel, can I respond to John's comments? So I think it's, I appreciate that, and I'm confident that the, the principals, you know, Jen and Carolyn are here. you know, Jen and Carolyn are here, and the teachers will appreciate that. I met with Courier teachers, I think, a week and a half ago, really just had a really great, great conversation with them, and I think recognizing the humanity of all of this is really important. Carolyn, in particular, has talked about that idea of grieving and really exploring the idea of grief through a process like this, and honoring the history and planning for the future, and how to do that in the healthiest way possible for everyone. So, my thought at this moment is, everyone's gonna need to take a beat, right? And I, where I would go is to, you know, allow the schools a little bit of space for themselves, and then principals to talk to teachers and staff about, you know, what is the most supportive and beneficial role that the board can play, that I can play, that, you know, as we, once we start just transitioning into that mode of processing, from, I guess from my perspective, it would be, let's hear from them, and then come back and then involve board members to the extent that, you know, is appropriate. I think this is a very, very much a community moment. We, one of the things that came up at the end of last week was this idea of, you know, if a community, if there's a loss within a community, our children are really gaining that new community as well, and so, yeah, I think there's lots of space, and I feel comfortable, I think, saying, from the board to teachers and staff, like, that you are interested in supporting that process. I don't think that you're the only one, John, so assuming collectively that we want to join in this, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll be in touch.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the work plan. Are work planners in the agenda? Anything standing out, anything that we need to add to the work plan?
I think as it evolves, the work plan ought to include things that have been discussed tonight, principally the grieving process, how to support it, providing more activities or hearing about more activities that support the students in a transition. We did indicate at one point that we would be changing the names of these schools, and we should have some process whereby the communities have some, and the kids have some input in change names. And lastly, a reminder to ourselves that we need to check in with the details that the public seems to want and need to feel more comfortable with the decision we just made.
Thank you. Okay, item...
Yeah, I saw something about an additional executive session in December, is that correct?
Uh, I think we bring that up.
About?
The legislators, or, yeah, that's on the agenda for item...
It is, is that the...
Just down here?
Oh, we haven't got, oh, sorry, sorry, I was just looking at the schedule and thought it would be...
Totally fine, all right, item eight, which is our previous item nine, legislators on VSBA updates. Jim, do you want to chatter, do you want me to chatter?
Why don't you chatter?
Okay. So, I think the update right now is generally around Act 73. The task force has been meeting in the communities, I know many of you have been watching the meetings, not attending them, we, there's been a great number of people showing up supporting the BRSU and our alignments with our independent schools, and it's been very positive, which has been kind of great to see, which has been a little disheartening, is that the maps have been coming out from the task force, the task force has been charged with creating three maps by December 1st. Those maps are going to be delivered to the legislators in January, and then the legislators will, I guess the best way to say it is, do what they will with them, whether they approve them, whether they dissect them, it's very unclear. We're not, we have been in touch with a few legislators, we are not getting an overwhelming, resounding, we're basically being told that they're not, they don't think those maps are pushed through. So, it does seem like there's a lot of uncertainty, not just with the work the task force is doing, but also just with the legislators in general. Even though Act 73 passed, it seems to be rather unpopular with a large body of, with all of the legislators. We have been, we've been working with the BRSU chairs and Randy, and trying to stay on top of this, communicating with legislators, but also trying to write letters to kind of make arguments against what's been said and really highlight glaring issues with not just the maps, but the information that's coming out, especially regarding independent schools, there doesn't seem to have been any real decision based on what's gonna happen to our non-operating districts. So, we're being as active as we can at the moment, and I think I included the letter that we just sent last week, and I expect another letter to go out again this week, specifically around the maps.
Did you want to mention our meetings with the independents?
Right, we also had a meeting last week, BRSU members and some of the independent school representatives around, you know, honestly strategizing how to keep our district together, partnering with them, and yet also preserving the fact that we are both coming at it from two different perspectives, there's independent schools, and we are very much focused on making sure that what happens at our public school level is also front and center for the, whatever maps come forward, so, kind of finding common ground, figuring out where we can work together and make sure we're not stepping on each other's toes during the process. You want to add to that at all?
No, I think at times there have been thoughts that we weren't on the same page, I think we dispelled that pretty well, that there's recognition we're on the same page, and we're gonna continue to work together to try to, you know, it's interesting because something came up in the meeting was, you know, it's like, you know, these guys are focused on running independent schools, and there was the thought that, oh, we're just focused on running public schools, and we're like, no, actually, we run a public school system that includes independent schools, providing education to our kids, so, you know, our interest is the entire system continuing to be available for our kids, and, you know, we think it serves our kids extremely well, and we want to protect that. So, we're working pretty well together on that. The idea is that, you know, I said, the maps that are coming out, you know, these guys, they're actually doing their best, you know, it's interesting, the two co-chairs of the Act 73, you know, the redistricting task force, you know, they both pointed out at one of the first meetings, okay, we're here, and now we're the co-chairs of this committee set up under Act 73, we both voted against Act 73, and a lot of the people in the room are feeling that way, they're doing the best they can, it's an extremely difficult job to say, you guys have a couple of months to totally restructure what education, you know, looks like in the state of Vermont. I think they're putting real effort into it, but it's a very hard job, and the results coming out so far have not been very promising, and we're trying to help point out, you know, how those are not promising from our perspective, or how they, you know, we're trying to point out the issues that they need to give more thought to. Not that we expect those maps, as Melanie said, to be, you know, to be the path forward, and we're trying to discuss how we can be involved with defining what would be the path forward, but everything that comes out has some influence, and so we're trying to ensure to the extent we can that, you know, whatever the task force settles on and delivers on February, or December 1st, at least that we've had our say, and hopefully we fix some of the problems that are in those proposals.
However, we won't end, I don't think, we're, once those maps comes out, doesn't mean that we're going to have said all that we need to say.
Oh, no, it's, this is a, we expect this process to be continuing well into 2026, yes.
And, you know, as hard as tonight's vote was, I do think, you know, these are the kind of actions that the state was hoping to achieve through Act 73, so I do think when it comes down to us having to argue these points of how to keep our system together, we can highlight that we are building responsible budgets, and while also making sure the outcomes are there for our kids, so that does make our argument a little bit stronger moving forward.
Mel, can I just make a comment? So, just because it's connected to this particular topic, at each board meeting, you're the last board for me to ask this question, which is, so let's put it under 13A, what, really, the question around advocacy for all of us, I think is that there's an important point after, we're saying December 1st, certainly there's a chance that they may end up voting earlier, but I'm not really seeking approval, but I want to make, see if you would like to be included in a joint meeting between the BRSU boards and inviting all of our legislators in December to be able to talk about the maps, talk about the legislative session. That becomes an opportunity for us prior to the session to share our thoughts, share our concerns, share our recommendations with our legislators before the session. So, Meadowey and Winhall are both, yes, interested in moving forward with that. I'm thinking that you probably would like to be a part of that, but I don't want to make that assumption, so if, in general, yes, just say yes, and then we will get it scheduled. I'm gonna need to schedule it sooner rather than later, and kind of work with a whole host of schedules, which means likely people won't, everyone won't be able to make it, but...
Are you anticipating a Zoom meeting as opposed to a public, or in person, or do you know, have you thought?
I have not gotten that far.
Okay.
I would prefer to be in person, but that may not be possible, so, and I'd start with legislators. My experience is that we tend to, the conversations tend to flow better when we meet with legislators in person than over Zoom, so...
I guess, I'd ask them, is anybody not interested at all in that?
Does anybody think it's a mistake for the board to meet with legislators in December? Okay, all right, shall I move forward with starting those conversations?
Funny, we actually have that as an action item.
Yeah, no, I see it, I see it there, I just think, I just wanted to tie it into the conversation we're just having.
Also call for a vote when we get to that, just to keep it clean. Any other questions from the board regarding Act 73, what we know, hopes, dreams? Okay, let's acknowledge then, number nine, currently previously number 10, future agenda items, we have on here a discussion on interdistrict choice. John Wilson, you pointed out at our last meeting that as, or maybe it was a public meeting, that it currently exists, so if we don't vote to change anything, it would exist as it...
Correct.
It would stand as it exists, so I guess the question then is to the board, you know, do we want to have a full-throated conversation about this at one of our future meetings, rather than just like, I'm seeing some, yeah, Jeff?
So, I looked on the website today, I look under our policies for interdistrict choice, and it basically says that it's, it'll be a policy procedure devised by the superintendent, so I don't even know what it is, because that's all it says, basically.
Okay. It doesn't lay...
Two points, two points is, one, it makes sense to have the actual policy articulated on the website so the public, and maybe the board too, would know what it entails. And secondly, you know, it's hard for us to say we want to retain the status quo when I don't even know what the policy is.
Is it not, so it's not listed under procedures, then?
It's in the policies and procedures, but it refers to something that would be developed by the superintendent, unless it's, unless what's on the website is...
We have voted on it before.
Maybe it's not in depth on that part, but if you go to this interdistrict choice, there's a web, part on the website that goes into detail about it, so maybe it's just not...
Well, I was looking at the policy procedures.
Yeah, so maybe it's just not listed, like, the detail's not in that part.
It should be clearer then, if nothing else.
Yeah, or have a hyperlink to that page.
So, I can't answer the question whether we want to take a look at it or not, because I don't know exactly what it is, and is that the question as you were right now?
Yeah, do we want to, well, I guess the question is, do we want to put it as an agenda item to look at?
Are we gonna have to look at it with the changes we just made?
No.
We don't, not necessarily, because it would still, it still pertains, we still are running a K-8 system with multiple schools.
Good, so let me ask this, if you don't mind.
Sure, I'm gonna look at it right now.
From our superintendent's perspective, from Randy's perspective, is there any need to change it?
There is no reason to change it.
Okay.
I would like, I mean, from my perspective, the concern is, the concern and the discussion we've had is around the middle school at the mountain, and the impact, sort of pros and cons of offering interdistrict choice for those kids. So, that's where, that's where the question has really sat, because there's a concern that a lot of kids might want to leave, and then what is the impact of that on Floodbrook? But then also the fact that, you know, if they want that, why wouldn't we offer it? So, I, I don't, I think that the point is a good one, that it either, if nothing changes, we just continue to do what we've been doing, but I think that it's important for there to be sort of a, an acknowledgement by the board that we're doing nothing, because not doing anything and not saying that leaves this question in people's minds about the future, and I think agreeing to not change it communicates that it's gonna be maintained. Does that make sense?
That's fine, so there would have to be an agenda item that we vote on then?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. I'm not including a date necessarily on that, but unless anybody wants to make an argument for not including that, we'll just put it...
On the next agenda or this one?
I said I'm not making a date for it to go on our agenda, just a future agenda item. And we'll have to decide on that once...
To Jeff's point, I think the procedure that we are currently following, which you've developed, because I hear stuff associated with it, that that be a part of the discussion.
I don't think it needs to, though, because I think the policy is, it is in my purview, and it works. The question is just whether the board is going to say, no more interdistrict choice or not. There's, it's not, I don't think it's, given the way the policy's written and the process we've had, it's about changing it, it's just, are we pulling it or not?
We have, I know that we have said out loud at previous meetings that it would, that we would have to revisit it, specifically when we were at Floodbrook, we said that there was a good chance that we might revisit it. So, I do agree that it has been on the community that it may go away.
Right.
Yeah, I think as the policy's written, it sounds like that you have to come to us and say, recommend if there should be any changes or not, and then, you know, because it's under your, you know, it's your deal, so if it's, and if...
Right, unless the policy gets pulled, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. The procedure is in my purview, which we've got, that's all well established, but the policy...
Is that we offer it?
Is that we offer it, right, and so...
So, I think we need to have a discussion about it, because wouldn't you, as the superintendent, if Floodbrook doesn't have their numbers for middle school, like, let's say it's Slim, then you, as the superintendent, would have the decision, and let's say somebody wants to interdistrict choice to the Manchester Building, you, though, could say, no, because you have to keep the numbers, right?
Let's, let's go ahead and put this on for future agenda, because I think that's a really good point, and the parameters, you know, if we feel like we need to put in parameters, if you need to write the policy, the procedure differently so that it's clear, I could series in four more parameters, and even the procedure as it's written includes... I could see reason for more parameters and even the procedure as it's written includes five schools. So it would need to be edited anyway. So even if that was the case, it seems like it's worth discussing. All right, so we'll keep that as a future agenda item. We have time for public comment.
Can I make?
Yeah.
So.
Sorry, yes.
Two, two things, sorry. One, I think, a discussion on community engagement approach. I know it's going to come up with the bond vote and everything, but I think I have some ideas too. Like I brought this up in Sutherland Forum, distributing leadership with community engagement, getting more people in, you know, all our towns involved and what that might look like, holding, you know, informational sessions distributed throughout the community. So I just think, you know, sooner than later, reevaluating what our community engagement is going to look like. Secondly, and I'll bring it up again, I know it's, we've got a lot going on in meetings, but I don't know what it would look like, but I brought in the past of having like an exploratory discussion around that film Gone Guys or Boys and Education. I don't, I think some of you watched it, doesn't have to be that film, but, you know, I, I think, I'll keep bringing it up until we have some kind of exploratory conversation about boys in education struggling with achieving across the country and what that means for us. So, one, there's a good time. I don't know what that looks like, if there's a way we can all watch the film. But I'm not going to assign homework, I do that, do that anyway.
And John, actually, can I, not necessarily answer right now, but I know when you've brought this up in the past, I find myself conflicted with our role as a board versus, you know, on a policy government board, right? So maybe just, and not right now, because I don't want to put you on the spot with it, but what would that really look like for us to have a discussion which would seemingly be guiding curriculum, which is not something that we typically get involved in?
Not necessarily guiding curriculum, but it would be, do we want to introduce, you know, if we acknowledge that throughout the country, boys are achieving at a lower level, higher rates of discipline, higher rates of suicide, all these factors that indicating a crisis for boys across the country. If we acknowledge that, then sure, our policy may be informed by such that we, you know, that we need to maybe at the start looking at, okay, what is not like a difference? Is there an ability gap, maybe eye ready? I know we've looked at some of that in the past, but looking at our achievement, you know, grades, discipline, things like that. We look at other factors, you know, historically marginalized groups, things like that, as far as, you know, looking at gaps where discipline, wherever may it be. But nationwide, there's been kind of a, you know, hesitation to look at the gaps, sex-based gaps, so.
So are you, so maybe looking at our policies through that lens and rebuilding the policies? Because I do think that in order to be, that we do need to be real clear.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I said an exploratory conversation first, and that's, that's where the policy governance, but.
We have the right.
One second, let me finish a statement.
Yeah, I, I, I think, and it's a, it's an issue I care about, but that doesn't matter. It's an issue, if you look at the facts, it's an issue. And I think getting on the same page about what the issue is, we can be more informed as a board and make policy as such.
If a sufficient number of board members want to explore what our school is doing to address the problem, and we got some examples of that a while ago, the problem of boys in the way that you've been talking about it, then we have a right to know what the school is actually doing. And that is usually a predit, a preparatory step to taking a look in our policy manual and raising the question if in fact there needs to be a modification or additional next level down policy reformation. But I think that the most important thing is to get the administration on board. And it takes a sufficient number of people who'd like to hear that information to ask for, what are we doing? And I would be certainly in favor of one, as one board member, of hearing about in more detail what we're actually doing. I did.
Yeah, a second.
I had to pay 10 bucks and read it.
Okay, so we, there's a request for the discussion around boys in education, potentially looking at it through a policy lens. And John, I think before, maybe we have some of the next agenda meetings, maybe we can discuss that and figure out what seems appropriate.
Yeah, I don't want to be heavy-handed with this, it's not my intent.
Yeah.
I do think it's something that's.
No, I, I think we all appreciate it and we're not here for all our kids, right? What are we here for?
It's the, yeah, ends policy.
Yeah, ends policy, okay. And Randy, as far as community engagement process and how the board can be involved, I know that you're making some, you're putting together some plans. Is that something that we, that might show up at another, for future agendas already that's in the works and how we're planning to adjust, I guess, our work plan and our engagement? As in, should we put it for another agenda item or is that something that, or is that a separate community engagement committee thing?
I, yeah, so I definitely think it's going to make sense to have a community engagement committee. The PR company organization that we're working with will begin, will begin later this month, talking to them. And I think that that partnership with the board is important as we lay out the plan for, you know, the next whatever six, nine months.
So then maybe for the next agenda, let's put on there a specific, we'll, we'll get around the wording for a specific community, a task for community engagement. And appoint those members and hand you that totally. Does that make sense? Yes.
We're still on future agenda items?
Yep.
All right.
Who else you got?
Do a lot more. No, we had a request tonight, which was withdrawn, was requests for the board to pay tuition to a non-TNG school. Now that's the third one that's come up in the last few months. It strikes me to make a lot more sense if we develop a policy associated with this particular issue as opposed to trying to tackle them piecemeal one at a time.
Don't we have a policy though? I mean, the policy is no, unless there's a request.
That's fine by me, but it's not, because Randy brings them to us every time.
Because of statute.
Well, I know, but you can develop a policy.
Agreed.
That addresses it in, in.
Yeah.
My thought is basically refer it to the policy committee, Dick, and have them kick it around. And I don't know if I can do it under tonight's agenda. Maybe we have to have a separate agenda item just to refer to the policy committee, or else I could do it under item six if you let me go back to it.
No, I mean, we wouldn't go back and I don't, no, I mean, the committees are still kind of ad hoc so unless, they would have to have a specific mission, but I don't know. Dick, you're a parliamentarian.
At this particular point, the board could say, would the policy committee gather together in proposed language to address the issue of parents requesting students to attend a school not in the orbit or possibilities of what we allow?
Yeah, if the chairman lets you make that motion, I'll second it.
I'd be happy to make the motion.
All right, well, let's write it down. I'm sorry, but.
This motion is going to be longer.
Can, how, can we do it concise way?
Please refer to the policy, the agenda of addressing.
Hold on, hold on. Referring to the, okay.
Of requests by parents to attend schools other than.
Ours.
The ones that are.
Ours.
Ours.
I'll second that. As unlikely as it may seem.
Do we still have a full policy committee?
We have two of us.
All right, so did you make the motion?
Both of them made the motion, seconded.
You have made the motion.
I already got the policy.
We'll come up with words.
I feel like this is not on the agenda and we just asked Roland to amend the agenda to get his piece on there.
Well, just put it on the agenda next time.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
This future.
I guess that's the way you should do it.
Let's get that on the, right. Let's get that on the agenda.
If you want to follow the rules.
Maybe by then, you and I'll get together and.
Have a policy done.
Have a policy.
Great. Jessica, anything for the future agenda items?
I said nothing.
Well, I'm good.
Great, thank you. On the back of your packet, if your packet is printed, there is a board self-evaluation. Go ahead and fill that out.
Public comments.
Oh, shoot, I'm so sorry, thank you. I wrote notes all over that public comment space. Yes, you moved to the beginning, but yes, step up, microphone, say your name.
Phil Gubek, first, I applaud you for your decision tonight and thank you for all the hard work and sometimes very difficult times of discussions that you have sought to, to arrive at this decision. I just want to make a suggestion, it's my understanding, or it looks like that, you know, we're taking these schools kind of in lumps as they exist and transferring their students to another school. And I suggest that we just look at the district as a whole, as one, and forget our town boundaries and where the kids currently go to school. And let's place them where it's the least painful, particularly in bus times and those related issues in the appropriate schools. It's my understanding, one of the options, and I don't think this is fait accompli, but all of Sunderland was going to go to Dorset. And maybe they might go to Manchester, and some Manchester students go to Dorset. Might be, let's say, a more acceptable and even distribution of how people travel. I mean, I, I traveled on North Road and I got to Dorset School tonight. Some of them starting on North Road and Main Street, and I made it to Dorset School in seven minutes for this meeting tonight. That means as possibly that the kids on the north, the children on the north side of Manchester might find it just equally desirable to go to the Dorset School versus all going to Mounds. Okay, so look at the whole map and where's the best placement for the kids rather than grouping the schools that as we're thinking about it as seems right now.
Thank you very much, Doug.
Good thought.
Yeah. Go ahead. Eric.
Good evening, my name is Eric Salat from Manchester. I was just curious, is it, will there be any cost savings as a consequence of the decision you've made tonight with respect to school expenses?
I mean, we hope so.
Did we get to see that?
We will be, so we'll be building on a budget based on the fact that we will be closing these schools. And that, I mean, rather than promise anything before we see it on paper, I, we're hoping that that would be the case.
Do you know what that might be?
Well, the next, the budget will be December 1st?
Second.
December 2nd will be the next meeting and we'll have the first look at the budget for next year.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay. Board self-evaluation, if you have the printout, if not, I've sent you an email with a link. If you go to your Google Drive and just look for my emails, you should see it there as well. But if you'd like me to send it back to you, please let me know. Our next meeting is December 2nd at 6:30 at the BRSU. And to reiterate, we should get another, we should get a look at the budget at that point. And discussion, action, special December meeting with all BRSU members, with legislators. We discussed this already, but to make it official, we'll get a first and a second meeting tonight.
I'll make a motion that we do decide to have TNG be a part of that meeting.
Thank you. David Bicham. Okay, all in favor of meeting with the legislators? Please signal five as saying aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Second?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you, all in favor? You want to call it?
Calling, the meeting is adjourned.